...Commission Meeting for Wednesday, July 9th. It's now 6 o'clock. For our agenda, would you please call the roll? Okay, we have minutes for February 26th. Has everybody had a chance to read them? Are there any amendments? Not hearing any discussion, I call for a motion to approve the minutes. All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
I wish to thank Ronnie, thank you for capturing all that. It was a very detailed discussion that was had, and I thought you did a good job of capturing it.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing on tree removal. Do you have the steel for me, Ronnie?
Uh, this is pretty simple.
Public hearing, I'm calling its order at 6:02. Everything in this matter has to be brought in testimony at this hearing. If it's not brought in this hearing, it cannot be used should this matter be appealed sometime thereafter. With that, staff report. That was short and sweet.
Uh, so, resident over on 13190 Southwest Bedford Street submitted a tree removal permit for a tree or a tree along the street due to it causing sidewalk damage, reducing soil coverage, and concerns about stormwater grain that's nearby.
Stormwater grain nearby?
Yeah.
And, um...
I went out to the site and the city code constitutes anything less than a sidewalk that's greater than three and a quarter inch is considered nuisance. So, this tree is actively exacerbating a nuisance along the sidewalk. And, I think it was in the pictures, it's a picture on this page. Flipping of a lawn, patches of area where the grass can't grow, right across the street from the Rats' house, if you recall.
Yep, yep.
As a bit of an aside, both the Rats and the tree tree that was removed where we kind of omitted the planning commission mistakenly, both have replanted their trees and done nice jobs with the landscaping that they used to replace the area and the planer strip. So, just considering that it's causing active damage to the sidewalk and active damage to the planer strip.
Thanks.
Under the condition that she replant the tree since...
The tree plant, a tree?
Plant a tree from the...
My list. In that same place?
Right.
Okay, there any questions with staff? Hearing none? Nope, sorry.
Um, normally you can't plant a tree the same place that a tree has been planted already because there are roots and all sorts of things that will get in the way. I only see a one inch, not a three and a half inch nuisance here, and you're not supposed to grow grass.
It has three and a quarter inch.
Three and a quarter, okay, three and a quarter.
All right, three quarters of an inch.
Oh, okay, got it, all right, all right, that makes a difference, all right. And, just for everyone's education, tree roots do not grow down, they grow out. They grow in the top 18 inches of the soil. They generally are twice the size of the crown of a tree. So, here, it'll be twice the size out to here, okay? And you're not supposed to grow grass under trees. Except for the sidewalk nuisance. We have, I would think we would have to... We visit it, but with a clear and, what's it called in the code when it's very clear what it is? Clear and objective and measurable, there you have it.
Thank you, it's always so helpful since you have all this background, so I think it's hard to know all this down there.
You could also recommend or mention that it has to be replacement tree that's also about root area.
Yeah, I noticed that the vegetation strip is very narrow, it's very hard to, it'll be very hard to get trees to survive there.
Sure.
Yes, yes.
But not the ones that were invested.
They've been there a long time.
Yeah, probably that we should, in the final order, should just make it clear for the owner, the property owner, so that...
They know the...
The new rules. Because that wasn't...
And we dictate that if it wasn't in the original code, can we enforce them to spend extra money?
It's in the code now, and it was in the code before this application was submitted, so it's live.
Even though it's replaced.
Yeah, you have to meet the code that exists at the time of the application. Okay, with no other comments, is there anyone who wishes to testify in this matter? First, in favor of the application? Hearing none? Anyone opposed to the application? Hearing, I assume there's nobody online, Ronnie?
If any members would like to do public testimony, please raise your digital hand.
Anyone who wishes to make a comment, neither in favor or opposed? Nobody, Ronnie? Okay. Again, reminding everyone that failure to raise an issue in the hearing will preclude that individual from raising this issue, some issue, at any appeal of this matter, whether to City Council or to the Court of Appeals. Okay, with that, I would request a motion.
Motion to approve with the condition...
Of the root area.
...of replacement tree from street tree, tree left, first area planted.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Um, I have, uh, sorry. I would decline. Six months, I would give them until December because it's better to plant it. Is that November 6th?
No, no, it's six, six months minus two.
Oh, is it? Okay, I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, okay, no problem.
I already lie.
Okay. It's okay, kind fly. Oh, I'm getting old.
That's okay. All right, go ahead, yes, all right, I'm a yes.
So, it's unanimous, the proof of this.
Everybody's voting yes?
Okay. With that, we have a special gift, unless there's anything else, Ronnie?
Would you like to close the hearing?
Okay. Thank you. Yes, we all said yes, it's unanimous. And with that, we, the next item on the agenda is a special presentation from Attorney Ed Trumpsky. Mr. Trumpsky?
I'm going to have to move that back around. Just sort of outline what I'm planning to talk about. Why would we need to show?
It's nice that we shared it out. Hey.
On the watch list. It's gonna be a next for us if I didn't take what I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Trumpsky.
Thank you, Chair.
Long story.
Tried to make this logical so that everybody can see what happens when you do want to propose a zoning change. Down at the bottom, there are a couple of examples that after I kind of go through this, I'll come here at the top.
The thing that you really need to do is focus on not what you want to do, but what's your goal? What are you trying to achieve by making a change to your zoning code? Because you may have to go at it a different way than the one that is most obvious, just because of the way the rules are. There are lots of parking regulations, things that are state mandated now that we have to approve, and there's a way to achieve some of those things with very minimal impact and others that have very maximal impact on neighborhoods. In Troutdale, so about two weeks ago, the City Council adopted a recommendation from the Planning Commission to toll all of the city's public parking lots, of which there are none, and make one other, what it was, one other parking accommodation to apply with the CPAC rules, which went into effect. And so, has absolutely no impact on anything in the city right now, but by making those elections...
Let me add a floor real quick. Each speaker, all of us, up to this.
Yes, right. Most people say that I shout so much.
Well, the acoustical system is not perfect here.
Right. So, there's more than one way to skin a cat, and in that, and in the city of Troutdale, it's very car dependent because there's only one bus line and it runs every half hour at the maximum. So, they wanted to make it as car accessible possible within the state rules, so they did, because the rules don't apply as adopted. So, you may not want to do what you have to do, but there is often a way to do it if he, or I, or someone else thinks through how it gets done. So, when you adopt, when you figure out what your goal is, what you're trying to achieve, the results, then staff has to notify DLCD of an intent to adopt zoning ordinance, or if it's going to be comprehensive plan change to that, and DLCD, I think it's, is it 45 or 68?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five.
To the first hearing, yeah.
First hearing. So, timing is important on these things, and that can slow the process down quite a bit. So, the next step that you do is, is how do you propose? What are the means or specific regulation that you think you want to adopt in order to achieve the result? And should draft a text, because that becomes the next step, is what the text says could affect a lot of things. There are a lot of regulations that the powers that be have over cities, as I'm sure you all know, you've been through a lot of these, they require cities to do things. And it takes staff time to read all of these, make sure that there's no conflicts, and if there are, to figure out ways to resolve them. And sometimes, they're big enough, especially if there's a comp plan change proposed, that you may need to make a budget allocation to hire an outside consultant. There are, there's a cottage industry here in Oregon of planners of all sorts. There are traffic planners, there are wetland planners, there are, you name it, you can find experts in everything. And so, your staff would start with this initially, unless it's really complicated, in which case it'd be, we'd go out, and you have to compare it to what's in your comprehensive plan. And the comprehensive plan has lots of parts to it, I'm sure you know, you've been adopting pieces to it. The one that people forget a lot of the time is the CIP, the Capital Improvement Plan, becomes part of the comprehensive plan. And if you want to spend money, especially SDC monies, on any portions of what you want to do, it needs to get adopted into the CIP.
That's system development charges.
System development charges too, yes. That system development charges can only be spent on items or projects that are on the CIP, the Capital Improvement Plan. So, we've had to, in other cities, when adopting, if we want to do something, we'd do a minor amendment to this Capital Improvement Plan along with the Transportation System Plan. In Troutdale, there's an outlet mall that the city has wanted to put a road through for access behind it for many years, and the mall owners have never been in favor of that, but we put it on the CIP as well as on the Transportation System Plan in order to make it so that we could spend money eventually to get it done. And now, we're finally have, as of about two and a half weeks ago, have an opportunity to sit down with the owner and actually plan it. They want us to pay for it in the city, but it gets done, but it's been, I want to say 10 years ago that we got it in the Capital Improvement Plan and Transportation System And in your case, with most of your development area, there's the Master Plan, the Kingston Master Plan, which has lots and lots of pieces to it, and different densities and street types and all the rest. What you're going to want to do if you're going to change some zoning is compare to that. I saw something float through where someone was proposing to change one of the roads, one of the collector roads, I think it might have been Chafford Road, yeah, to move it a little bit. That's going to have to get compared to a lot of these documents. It's a major piece of work to get it to comply. So, when you look at it, you're going to have to have your staff work hard on that, and it's going to be a slow process, because I know that Max has many jobs in addition to staffing the Planning Department. He told me he takes the passport applications and all sorts of other things.
Oh, my, I have to come here.
So, and with Mr. Westland leaving, I'm sure there'll be yet more rolling down the hill to your trade to get done. So, you've got to plan for all of that stuff. Let's see, Metro's functional plan, all of the city code and zoning code has to comply with the functional plan. The functional plan doesn't directly apply to projects or applications, the city has to do that. That's one of the ways that I like, I'm a little cynical. I say that Metro has all of the authority and none of the responsibility. It doesn't have to listen to the owners complain about, "Why are you doing this to me?" All you get to say is, "Metro made us." Nobody believes the city when you say that, but Metro makes you do a lot of things. Same thing is true with the city's IGA with Metro when the UGB expansion took place. I haven't read that in probably two years, but I remember that it has all of the middle housing rules in it and then some. There's more to it than just the middle housing pieces, and you're bound by it, and Metro will complain and not approve it if you don't comply. So, that's something else that you need to be constantly thinking about. I hope there are citizens listening to this, because nobody understands how little authority you folks really have. You have all the authority in the world to do everything.
And even less after the legislative session.
And it's, yes, it's getting worse and worse every time. Then, there are DLCD, Department of Land Conservation and Development Goals, and the OARs. That's the transportation planning rule, and Goal 19 applies to everything that you do. And the transportation planning rule was written back in the early 80s, if I remember right, and it was written back in the day when cars were all smoggy and big clunky things that they aren't anymore, there were no electric. But you can sum up the transportation planning rule by saying, "Cars are bad, bikes are good." That's all it really says, but it goes on for pages. Everybody, what they have to do to get rid of cars. And frankly, I believe it's an anachronism and ought to be repealed, but that's me, and I can see how much authority I have, so. But that's another one that you have to deal with, and you have to favor pedestrian bike ways and transit, even though, in many respects, electric cars are much cleaner than buses and other forms of transportation that the TPR favors. It's just not a date, it needs to be revised, but we're stuck with it. You have to live with it and apply it. Let's see, state statutes. Oh, I'm sorry, I want to go back on the CPAC rules. Now, that's one that 10 cities appealed to the Court of Appeals. The Court of Appeals gave a really weak need analysis to it and upheld it, and then the Supreme Court refused to hear it, so we're stuck with the CPAC rule. It stands for Private Friendly and Equitable Community.
We have that noted, that that reduced, that eliminated some private parking.
There are so many anachronisms in here, I had to remember, I had to look it up when I was writing this today, I said, "What does CPAC really stand for?" So, and, you know, in like the city of Cornelius, one of the CPAC rules says that you're restricted on how much parking you can have, and you're not supposed to add any for apartments that are within...
A certain distance, I can't remember if it's 1,200 feet or 2,400 feet of a bus line.
Thank you. And guess what? Cornelius has a bus line running right down the middle of it, and so virtually the whole city is subject to these limited or restricted parking rules, and your zoning has to comply with that. Don't have any option about it.
So, there's a maximum parking in that rule?
Absolutely. There's more than one maximum parking, there aren't many of them. And again, this is a rule which implements the transportation planning rule, the TPR, which says that cars are bad and everything else is good. It's a policy judgment that's been taken away from you and from your citizens, your State statutes and the OARs, these are state statutes that have been written, and the clear and objective standards rule has been expanded many times over the last 10 years, applies now to all housing. So, every ordinance that you adopt has to be clear and objective. Talk about a couple of examples of that in a minute or two. And the middle housing rules, where they have to be, where they can't be, where they must be, is all in statutes that have been interpreted, and now, OARs are being written to implement that. And again, that's where you are, your staff has to make sure that any zoning change that you want to make doesn't run afoul of those things. But there are a myriad of rules like that, and it will drive you crazy trying to write around them. So, once you get through that, you get to draft your proposed zoning modifications the way you want to adopt them, and LCDC takes a look at the text, and, yes?
Certified that zoning versus comprehensive plan versus development code hierarchy there...
Sure.
The, in the city.
Want me to start at the top? We'll start with the federal constitution.
Okay. And then there's, no, I've given this talk before, there's the federal constitution, which has the takings clause that you, I can't run afoul of. And then there's lots of state, federal statutes. Then the third level is the state constitution, and then state statutes, then the metro, what do you call it, code, the functional plan, and then underneath that is the city's comprehensive plan. That's your highest document that you folks get to write. And then under that comes all of your development code and zoning ordinances, which are really part of the same package, they're at the same level with all your ordinances that regulate who gets to build what where. That development code and the zoning, some cities have pieces of them separated, some cities have them all together, most cities have them all together. Ours has, the zoning code is essentially the development. It's anonymous for the city. So, those are at the bottom of the heap, you know, they have to comply.
With everything else above it, and that's just life. So, let's talk a little bit about pocket parks, because Max told me that you're looking at doing pocket parks in certain neighborhoods. You might say that there must be adequate, adequate parks of proportional size to the number of kids expected to be in the neighborhood. That's going to fail the clear and objective standards test, because...
Doesn't have a number.
It has to be something that anybody can sit down and calculate. There's no discretion in the application of it. If you folks have any discretion in how you interpret it, it's not going to pass, not clear and objective. So, you can say that 10% of the area in the, it's this box, has to be parks, and no park can be...
There's no form of any...
That's what you, that's one way to do it. Another way, we were talking about one this afternoon, do you remember which one, what it was?
I think I was referencing this one.
The Beaverton one, yeah. Talk about the Beaverton one.
So, I read through this after it was sent to me, and Beaverton does have some weird stuff in this chapter, for example, their definition of open space also applies to private backyard.
Yeah.
And so, you know, I went back and I looked at Kensington Square, and the stormwater facility would also qualify as open space, and that was...
That's common in a lot of cities.
So, they had a 7.13 acre development, and the stormwater was like a tenth of an acre, it was pretty small, and then if you were to apply this 25%, you're looking at like 1.8 or 10 acres. I didn't go all through all the calculations of what the patios for those 86 units were, but you can probably do the math here, but they would be close. I think the only thing that they would be missing is the required active open space with... So, Beaverton requires a 25% of the entire site to be considered... So, Beaverton requires a twenty-five percent of the entire site to be considered open space, even though they apply patios and stuff like that, natural areas, which we do too. Not patios, but natural areas. And then twenty-five percent of the fifteen percent has to be active open spaces, which is what you would traditionally think of as a park. And then page, um-
Page two, section I.
Apply, uh, that would require that you need to have two of them. So, I think, I'm thinking of the things that would be the easiest achieving to build is probably like a shelter or a shelter. Put in a bench with a pathway and maybe like a gazebo. Um, the city doesn't always want to have water beaches like Goutins and, um, because they're expensive, even if they break down, you know, because those are the cases. Um, so, I would imagine that it would be similar to the pocket parks that were designed for the most part in the town center, because those were small, uh, a quarter of an acre, as Mr. Trumpsky said, and had pathways and benches going through them. And so, I think there's a way to maybe synthesize this, uh, break it down, simplify it, and potentially add it to our code sixteen-one-one-four-one-one-zero, which is the parks code in the Kingston Terrace area. Because it requires, it, it, like, like the master plan does, specifies the necessity for neighborhood parks and community parks in certain zones, but as has been pointed out before, omit pocket parks. So, there'd have to be a way to determine a proper ratio that would be acceptable to include in that code, but also not, uh, make it to where they cannot meet their minimum density requirements. And Metro, they would probably reject it.
Oh, oh.
So, you'd have to fiddle with it a little bit, because we have to keep in mind that all these developers have to meet density. That's really the main thing that, uh, the powers that be, as it was put, are concerned with.
What's the density requirement per-
It's X units per acre.
Thank you. Yes, X units per acre. So, the town center is twenty-two, beach bend is eighteen, the central is twelve, and the rural character neighborhood is eight.
So, um, I, I'm the one who went crazy. It's really interesting that Beaverton and Tiger, the language that they use is still completely different. It's just amazing. Um, but I've just been driving around going, you know, "It looks like this stormwater facility is going to be our only open space and no one can use them." And I think that's why Beaverton put it in active, um, what is the word, active, right?
And I think that's really important to include.
Yeah. Um, yeah, because I don't want to see every-
Open space fenced off and wet.
Um, uh, what else? Yeah, because I was looking at Kensington and, um, you know, they, they paid their money instead of doing open space. They paid their, um, system development charges. And, um, I was wondering what, how much they paid in system development charges versus how much they would lose if they didn't fill up too much.
Well, they would still have to pay system development charges, even if they did build a park. If it was, if, 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 well, I guess that would be a question for the SEC's administrator because it's not in the code. So, right now, it's not currently in the code. So, they would have potentially gotten credits for building a pocket park. I'd have to look at the CIP like, uh, Trumpsky mentioned, but-
So, in that area, because they have it in that city.
Yeah, right.
Um, an example-
They would have had to say it would still pay SEC, and it wouldn't have qualified for credits. I mean, you know, say whether or not it would have agreed to that.
The development we just had, um, that's off one thirty-seventh. Right, Kensington. We raised the issue of doing a pocket park there because a lot of people want to have, especially if they have children, small children, they want to be able to- Right, yeah. -keep an eye on their kids. Uh-huh. Um, and we couldn't do it because they wouldn't have been able to meet their minimum density requirement. They actually bragged that they exceeded the density and they- They theoretically, they were half a unit off. Okay, all right. So, but the, but that's, that's the, the conundrum that we're facing is, we want to have parks, you know, small parks in a community, but because of the metro, actually, it's the state that has established the minimum density rules. It really puts everybody in a bind. Well, you know, I think if you're trying to divide a property into equal, equal lots sort of thing, um, because it's now, is it, is it density per development, density per acre? Per acre. What?
Yeah, but per development as it relates to the-
To the acreage, yeah. So, their, um, their stormwater development, you know, you could put a couple houses on that and then move, move, um, some permeable lawn into development. And yeah, it's, it's-
I think, I think cleaner services dictated to them where their stormwater needed to go.
Yeah, CDRS has control over all of that. Okay.
So, a question and kind of a concept, it's the thing that I had Max send out to you that kind of listed different arguments in. Kensington Square was the perfect example of how it all comes together. Um, there's a lot of stuff in the, uh, Kingston Terrace master plan. States things should be a certain way. There's no corresponding ordinance. Um, so they, we, we would bring up issues that we cared about, and they would reply, "The ordinance is too bad," and they were right.
Right.
Um, so, conceptually, uh, the Clean Water Services finished their study, the report will come out today to do things from a regional approach. Currently, it's on a site by site. So, a lot of their area had to get used to stormwater drains.
Okay.
Um, the master plan says you should have not single-family style, uh, units. Uh, you should have a variety, uh, not in an ordinance, don't need it. They were able to do condos, you know, five hundred grand plus condos, which, when they lose the area for the storm drain, you had room for condos and storm drain and a road. And that's it. Um, they, as far as a pocket park, there would have been the room because things that we say we want in the master plan didn't have ordinances to back them up. Uh, so, kind of, what I'm hoping, we can explore. And, and thank you for helping out with this. This is, I so appreciate your presentations. Um, anyway, is, I would like, I would hope that we can address some of these issues beyond sitting here once a month and talking about them. And what's capable for us to do? And, and, you know, we can't do things we're not capable of. We need to know the path that we're taking. But I'm kind of looking as we talk about this, what is there within our abilities to do? That's kind of, kind of a general concept.
Take the master plan and break it down by paragraph and then write ordinances which implement that.
Because the, the master plan is probably a little more general since have a mixture of, of, uh, housing types.
Yeah.
You, you might be able to say, "There must be a mixture that consists of not more than forty percent of single-family dwellings." Uh, forty percent, not more than forty percent of-
Uh, townhouses.
-or condominiums. You, you can write, write that, and that is what you should be doing, uh, to implement your master plan, is break it down with a little more detail, with very clear and objective standards as to what you want to be there.
Yeah, for, for example, the master plan for what you're talking about right now, uh, this, it should be, should be, uh, diversity intermixed together, uh, stronger neighborhoods. Its policy specifically excludes monocultures of single housing types segregated into enclaves or separate subdivisions. Um, so they had an ordinance that says exactly that.
So, so the comprehen, and the comprehensive plan doesn't apply to an application to develop.
Uh-huh.
Only the ordinances.
Right.
Or your development code.
Okay.
Have to translate that.
So, step, step would be, take, take what it says in the master-
Add it in ordinances.
And develop in whatever manner ordinances are developed.
Right.
Ordinances.
I have a parking problem.
Okay.
Uh, when I drive in new, in a part of King City, Macbeth, for example, um, we now have these parking, no, no required off-street parking. Um, cars parked on both sides, I can barely get through with my car. A fire truck would not be able to get down the street. Uh, is there a way in future development, and this is something that's really bugged me, people using their garages as a storage unit? Is there any way that we could have an ordinance that says, "If you have a garden, if you have a double garage, you must park one of your cars in your garage"? Or is that going to, you know, I, I've been really thinking about that because I'm really concerned exactly the issue that's on Macbeth, and that's, we're going to have the same kind of street issues in future development.
Probably, there's more than one way to skin this cat. It probably would make more sense to require there be a neighborhood association with some rules and require that to be a, one of the rules, that each, each dwelling or each unit must have two, uh, parking spaces, if it's allowed, I'm not sure they are, uh, but at least one, and one vehicle must be parked in it. Uh, put that in the, in the PCNR as, as, as well as in your development code, that it's a requirement to do that. Um, I don't know any city that has done that, and I would kick you away from my garage, but-
Well, but, but, no, I'm-
What was explained to me before? Have to be careful with that.
I, no, I understand, but so is their dri, so is their driveway park private property. And, but, but I'm really concerned about safety, that this is causing a real and, you know, clear and present danger. What about different approaches? Would, would it be the city's options or would it be the HOA's option to say you could only park on one side of the street? Oh, that's a, oh, that's a major candidate. I know that, but that's a consequence for those.
So, Ed and I have been at this, at this point here. Yes. HOAs cannot have authority over public streets. So, so, but the driveway, they can't. Correct, correct. The driveway and the, right, they can't. But public streets, they cannot because they tow a car that they joy board can be only charged.
So, the, what you're saying is the city could make a decision on certain streets and there was no parking on one side of that street. It's like we, we have parking except for the, the car now.
I, I would go further and say the city should do that. Now, before, a number of years ago, I represented a developer who wanted to have no parking on one side of the street because it did look dangerous to the developer and they wanted it to be safe. They asked the city, you know, or they put on their plat that there will be parking on one side of the street, and the city turned around and said, "Okay, but you have to put up the no parking sign." And that, that's just as one of the conditions of approval. That is allowed. That's, that's not a problem. And, and in some respects, from a safety standpoint, it may be the city's duty to do it. And there was a sort of appeals decision that came down, so, and it said that, uh, cars parked within-
X feet of an intersection.
X feet, I can't remember, twenty feet or ten feet of the intersection blocks the view, uh, and a motorcycle is-
Yep.
-hit by a car or two. So, the state sued the city for not enforcing its parking regulations.
So, if you adopt them, you've got to enforce them and tell the cars if they block the, the view or if they're parked in the no parking zone. But typically, those are complaint-driven systems, uh, and, you know, somebody will call and say they're parking in the no parking zone, and, you know, then, then somebody, whoever it gets delegated to in the city hierarchy, it's-
Okay, now, taking that one step further, if you already have a street, and I'm going to use the same street, where it's creating a safety issue, could the city subsequently go in and say, "Sorry, there's going to be no parking on one side of the street"?
Let me tell you a story.
My concern is that probably is can't be happened.
I, I represented the city of West Lynn ten years ago, and they decided to do that because the neighbors thought it was unsafe. Right behind, uh, this is West Lynn, yeah, West Lynn, but right behind the high school, uh, the neighbors complained that, that they couldn't even get in and out of their driveways. So, city adopted an ordinance, uh, I think it had been a resolution, uh, under their other ordinance, applying the, the no parking ordinance to one side of the street. A young student fought that, took it to court and lost. But he was so upset about it that he went on to run for the city council, get elected, and he's now the mayor of, uh, West Lynn. His name, his name's Rory Bialistowski. Yeah. And so, so, yes, you have the authority, but, and sometimes has weird twists what happens. Uh, but Rory is now the mayor there.
Because, I mean-
Let's hear what you're talking about, Rachel.
Macbeth. I literally, I could barely get down the street and I have a ordinary car, nothing huge. And I am sure the top fire truck wouldn't be able to save me. And they're parked to the cur, I mean, to the streets, there isn't, there's no place anywhere anyone could pull to get out of the way.
What you should do is, is ask someone to take some measurements and ask a fire, uh, official to go down and look at it, decide whether or not they can, then make a recommendation to city council, adopt whatever you adopt here, to city council to, uh-
Apply the no parking to that side of the street.
I am correct, it's Macbeth, it's the one in Edgewater, that's the narrow street. Well, there's-
Macbeth is the one that they've talked about before. Yeah. So, the city council is the one that dictates all streets.
Yeah, um, and I'm just, probably not in Edgewater because everyone has garages, but as we develop more and more, I mean, those, some of those townhouses on the corner don't have garages, right?
Mm-hmm.
And people go, "Okay, well, I'll park on the street." Um, it's going to become parking congested, um- Well, that's, go to southeast Portland and you'll see exactly that.
I also think that if you, uh, request that there's no parking, less parking in Edgewater, then you're going to have some pitfalls from folks who live in Edgewater because they are upset about the parking.
Well, they're under, they're upset about everything. Um- But, yeah, but, but we, we are going to have to really address parking in the whole-
I, I, I would like to make a point, a phrase like, "They're upset about everything," should not diminish what they're upset about.
No, I'm not, no, I'm not diminishing. The point is-
Just make it, just make it-
I'm not sure how the city can make the folks happy there. I really don't under, I don't know. I mean, I would suggest that Ed's question, approach it from a safety- Yeah. -standpoint, get the numbers, have the, have, you know, have, ask the fire folk to drive through there when, when there's parking on both sides and it's really tight, and it's, but if we can address it as a safety issue, that makes it a different, whole different conversation, not just a personal preference. Well, and it isn't just car cars. There are people who have the big, um- They honk the trucks. Big honking trucks, and they're a lot wider than-
I mean, what the city council could do is they could request that the city engineer take a look at it and maybe identify specific areas of concern, like strips, greenhouses where there's the curb around it, something like that, instead of closing off the entire street, just close up specific sections of it to where it opens up, like, you might have, or-
Being able to make, safely make a turn.
That would probably be a middle ground solution that might work. They just did that over on, um, six- That would probably be a middle ground solution, that might work, they just did that over on, um, Kingston, where they have parking from, five feet out from, first, work fun out there and paint the curb and. That would be something.
Well, I understand it's more difficult in an existing development, but I'm also thinking as we're gonna be seeing more and more development occurring and because of the density requirements.
CPAC rules require the skinny streets.
Yes.
That's what's wrong.
Yeah, I know, we've got the skinny streets, we've got very dense areas, we're not requiring park, off-street parking, particularly for denser housing. That is a formula for not only failure, but potentially serious.
And, you know.
Safety concerns.
My expectation is, is that there will be enough.
These skinny streets built with parking on both sides or, or other, other impeded, uh, access. Somebody's gonna die in a fire.
And there will be a lawsuit, and some city's gonna pay, and, uh.
CIS, the city insurance company, will not be happy. Uh, but, and then, and, and maybe the state can sue too.
I would, I would advise any city, bring the state in, because the state is the entity that's forcing.
But they're, into them, into them, yeah.
State understands that it is causing safety hazards, because there are just that many cars. People are, own cars, and regulating the parking.
Particularly, once you get out of downtown Portland, people need cars to get.
Anywhere.
Anywhere, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know many of us who wanna walk a mile and a half and be carrying large bags of groceries.
So do we have any specific questions for Ed while we've got the resident expert here?
Well. Are you, are you certain of notes of, of things we can think about here?
I, I will have a question at the end. When I was, and it's like I said, when I was in the corporate world, I had a very unpopular view of meetings. I felt they should accomplish something, and that requires work. So.
Work.
I worked beyond the meeting. So I will be asking at the end, what now? What do we do now? So, just so that's in your head as we go through this.
I would like to point out one thing that is unfortunate with the leaving of the city manager Mike, we're losing a decade's worth of institutional knowledge, including the intent behind the master plan. And I mean, the guy knew infrastructure and city works, and not only are we losing Mike as a person, a lot of his responsibilities, as Ed mentioned, are falling to Ronnie and me and Dave.
And so much time.
You have six city staff, so, you know.
For the last two, year and a half with litigation.
Right.
It has reduced the ability of staff to do some of the things.
Our capacity is, beyond the threshold of.
I also like to point out too, when the council starts discussing about interim, expect nothing to get done during that time.
Like, like, what?
So interim city manager, there, just to kind of help keep the will of the government rolling.
Okay.
But we're not going to do anything big.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
We're not gonna be able to make any changes.
That won't happen until, until the city manager.
Could be a year.
So in terms of sitting down with our comprehensive plan, who does that?
That would be me.
That would be you.
You could help them.
Okay, we can help you.
That's a good thing.
Or if the city council, you know, identifies it as a need, increases the budget for it.
Okay.
And then hires a consultant, you know, preferably someone who worked on the master plan and is familiar with it, like 3G. And they can take a look at it and.
I'm certain, I think it. Kensington. Oh, not, not Kiss. Oh. Oh. Killson.
Killson.
Killson, thank you. They're really good at that.
And I can certainly help, I've drafted a lot of, of code, city code.
And the master plan took over a million dollars, eight years to develop, and, you know, alternative studies and things like that.
Lot of public hearings, that was required.
Lot of public hearings.
We're probably talking three to four years by the time you could get something implemented.
And if that was to be done, that would need to be initiated by the next permanent city manager.
Right. In the meantime, you folks can prioritize. Look at the Kensington Square Master Plan. Pick out two or three things that you think need immediate work. Draft up some things yourself, give them to Max and Ronnie, and, and say, when you get some spare time, work on these.
Okay.
Cause I would like to implement something like the pocket parks, you know, and that would be nice.
Yeah.
From the last couple of meetings, I've heard two things.
Yes.
Right, that was, those were good ones.
That's another thing that the.
To you, is, is.
Prioritize two or three things that you wanna get done in the next year, and it'll get done in two.
Or three.
Something, yeah, I mean, but literally, it takes that long to get things drafted and reviewed through all of these. Rules that, that, uh, the rules have to get, your ordinances have to pass.
Nothing can even come back to planning commission until it's gone to DCLD and other various.
So that would, that would be my process, is that if I was to try to implement a new section in the chat, in the code, for parks, for example, since that's what we're talking about, um, I would draft it as best I can, that complies with the master plan and the rest of our codes, so there's nothing contradictory. And then I would submit it to DLCD and Metro and ensure that it doesn't, uh, go against any of their policies. DLCD, it's the state level of urban land conservation development, so.
I have a quick and dirty one. It's disability. A lot of people cannot ride a bike. They would like to, they can ride a trike. There's nothing in the code to require any entity to provide any kind of parking for tricycles.
All right.
That's a very simple, easy one, speaking as someone who cannot ride a bike and would like to be able to ride a trike.
The Metro's code, just so you know, requires trails to be, it used to require them to be eight feet wide. So I went and, for another city, told them that that violates federal funding rules, they have to be at least ten feet wide. So they were embarrassed.
And the west side trail is supposed to be twelve feet wide.
Yeah.
That should accommodate trike.
Right.
And which used to be Metro's code, wouldn't.
Or, you know, you wanna be able, if somebody's in a wheelchair, obviously somebody may be pushing them, but you wanna be able to have at least two people that are walking with that person, and that starts getting to be fairly wide.
I'm wondering how much, um, power we have over things like, um. Okay, apartment buildings, if they have more than two stories, are required to have two staircases. And that goes back to, um, building materials, basically. And, um, and it's, with that configuration, you can only build one and two-bedroom apartments. Um, if you only have one staircase, you can have an apartment, basically, wrap around it. And, um, and it's dependent on what it is built with. Um, Seattle actually has adopted a standard for single staircase apartments. Is that, could we do something that requires, oh, I don't know, something climate-friendly in terms of HVAC, in terms of, you know, what can we do in terms of that?
I was like, I'm aware of a building code.
That's what I was wondering, is it all, is that all building code or?
It's entirely building codes, and I know, I don't know what city, but there is a city that's looking at that, trying to get, uh, the one staircase rule, but it does require flame retardant materials.
Right, yeah.
Or expensive to build, but you get a little more space, so it, the developers are saying, it still makes economic sense to do it with one, with one staircase.
Yeah.
But that may not always be true, the economics will drive that away.
Now, you remember in that same development we just had, had, we required, uh, filters in every apartment.
Right, I remember that, yeah.
It was to avoid certain other requirements, yeah.
They do not have to build a second access point, or they, they said they couldn't.
Yeah. But the, but the, the point being, is you, there are often more than one, one way to get around a problem.
Okay, yeah, so, um, who, who would I contact in terms of putting that into Oregon?
State legislature.
Yeah, that has.
Is it?
Yep, okay, all right.
That would have to bill.
Oregon year on?
I would, yeah, start at Oregon year on.
Office.
Actually, Forty's. She's now our state senator.
Senator now, yes, right.
Okay, I don't know if they represent.
Can't remember who they appointed.
Yeah, they appointed somebody.
Your office.
And just so you understand the, the size of that town.
Uh-huh.
There's a thing called the international building code, and that's what Oregon adopts most of.
Right, except for a few chapters that they vary from that.
And so if you're asking them to vary it, it could take them several years to figure out how to do that, even if they were to try to copy Seattle's code.
It might not be an easy thing to do, but there may be an optional piece of the international code that allows the one staircase. I don't know, but somebody will have to look that up, it's in building codes.
And our person that probably handles all our building code codes and is very active with the legislature.
Well, that gives them more time, right?
They call them up though and just say.
Hey, do you, do you know off the top of your head, maybe they have some information about it? Can I ask a question back to you? But the master plan says, wording in it, which is, a lot of it could be considered order plate, how do we get the order plate into the code, the steps? I'm going back to your comment, what's next? In other words, we've got a list, I see as a list of things in the master plan that we do not see in the code. Okay, so we, we list those out.
Hey.
Figure that for each one. Next, yeah.
Right, what is it that you want to do to?
Carry out the, the language of the master plan? How do you wanna make it more specific, make it clear, objective, and measurable?
And get that written up and, and see if DLCD likes it, and Metro.
Sometimes the county.
You need to come up with a list, yes, you, can you come up with your list and try.
Prioritize it, which ones do you wanna do first?
Aren't working on, I wanna do the laws.
Well, the first step is to hire another planner, to help me out.
Literally, it is a very time-intensive, uh, job to get these things written in ways that will be acceptable.
Right, cause I'm already thinking of the, one that was brought up, the parks, not the parks, the diversity of the housing types.
Oh, yeah.
So the statement that Dean mentioned, this policy specifically excludes monocultures.
Right.
Prefers to the types of housing allowed in all the neighborhoods.
Right.
So it doesn't dictate it, it's because they're allowing it.
Right.
So what we would have to do is interpret that as meaning that we can dictate it, and maybe the design standard section of the Kingston Terrace Code, you know, when there's like articulation and all that stuff, it would be like a ninth section that would say, you know, like diversity of types.
That, that's define what the types are.
Define what they are, and then. Require not more than certain amounts of.
Tiger, Tiger Cat's that, it's really interesting, they have, um, they list four or five different types of middle housing.
So do we as well, duplexes, you know, that's already in there. But then it would have to be more explicitly stated, percentage-wise or kind of what have you.
To give, Mr. Mitchell, I drafted code, and when I was on the variance committee in the city of Portland, when I lived there, and I saw some changes that needed to happen to the code, I drafted it. It went to staff, it went through, it, the bottom line is it took two years to get it from me writing, finishing writing code, to getting it to the point where it could be implemented by the council. And I just, I'm, that sounds horrible, but it's unfortunately a fact that this process takes a long time to go through the process.
I, yeah.
Also, we're in a transition period, and I have to follow whatever the city manager tells me what to do. So if I start writing code right now, and then in a year, we hire a city manager, and he says, I don't wanna change the code, and what do I do on that work?
Or S.O.L.
And I just wanna stop another Kensington village from happening, you know?
Exactly.
Well, no, I.
There's gonna be developments, gonna be possibly more developments occurring in two years. And so we've got things in our master plan that are now not in code.
Which is why I was saying with Ed, I agree with what Ed was saying, is that there should be some small, simpler fixes that we could probably implement in the shorter term.
Okay.
That aren't too complex.
Okay.
Some examples, some examples. Stormwater study. Master plan has statements about how we're gonna take care of existing stormwater erosion problems. That's a big issue.
So I think an easy fix with that one is to make it, uh, a red, ordinance, any, whatever stormwater system we know it, Clean Water Services tell us, tell us what to do.
Once they adopt their new stormwater management plan, then we'll have to change the, we'll, we will implement a stormwater code, and that will address, like, refer to that, but the city can't do anything to fix stormwater that's not in our city. So if it's outside the jurisdiction, it may be upstream, but it's Clean Water Services is the ultimate jurisdiction over stormwater.
And, and well, I would, I would just, so we have concept, um, the Kingston Terrace Master Plan states in several places, the development should address existing erosion problems, and says, once complete, the Clean Water Services work should be assumed to be part of the Kingston Terrace Master Plan. So further action from King City is required, but that's pretty straightforward, it says, once they get their report, it should be considered a part of the master plan.
But then it'll have to adopt their ordinance.
It's not a requirement.
But that's a, that's.
They have to make it a requirement.
That is a simple thing, that when that decision comes down, it should go straight to the city council.
It should happen this month.
And damn it, city council, you gotta adopt that right away. No, that's not signing commission, that goes straight to the council.
With exact requires, all the codes change to implement.
All it requires is that the code will apply immediately, just adopt the clean water service standard.
I talked with staff over at Clean Water Services about, well, strategies to kind of sync up the code with stormwater management plan, but you, we have to do it in a way that doesn't make sense if it's completely redundant. Um, you know, yeah.
All we have to do is just say we, we are adopting the clean water service.
Standard.
Standard as the King City standard.
Kind of like what we do with the building.
Yeah, yeah, and that's, that's quick and dirty.
And then if you wanna come back and tweak it later, you can, but at least you'll have a good framework in place of what CWS has already adopted.
That's something that goes straight to the city council, and that should be done ASAP. That's something that goes straight to the city council, and that should be done ASAP.
Uh, I don't believe...
No, that doesn't go to D C L D.
I don't think there's any notice, yeah.
Well, if you would have to do your, I don't know.
Oh, standard notice of a hearing, but, but I think it would be quickly, have a, have a workshop with the council, explain how this works, and then have it on the next meeting.
Yeah, I mean, what we would really want to do is have Clean Water Services come and talk to the city council.
Just like they came and talked to, to us, about six months ago.
Yeah.
You should push your mayor to put it on the agenda, and new city or interim city man. Put it on the agenda.
Yeah, that's, but that's something, that's an exceptional situation where you're just adopting, adopting a...
This sounds, this sounds excellent.
Yeah.
As, as an approach and a way to do it. And the difference being, the report is regional approach, as opposed to a, every single site.
Mm-hmm.
Has to do it by itself, so it's a major thing.
Yeah, and I'm sure Tiger, I'm sure Tiger will do exactly the same thing.
And also, I want to say to our services and tell them to allocate some credit to King City and their issues.
Let me give you the irony of ironies.
I love irony.
This morning, I spent an hour on the phone. I represent a private developer, uh, and Clean Water Services wants them not to use the regional storm facility, but to put one on every parcel as we break them off and build separate stormwater facilities on each one. Where a regional one is already constructed and is there and complies with code, they don't like that. It's a form of dispersive.
This is not, no...
Can, can I ask you, does it affect us?
No.
No, that's...
This is not this area.
No, no, no. This is, is this Clackamas County?
No, this is, no, C W S is only Washington County.
No, 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 I meant the one you're talking about.
No, it is in Washington.
Oh, it's in Washington County?
Yeah. It's bigger than a bread box.
(laughing). Okay, no, things are often peculiar in Clackamas County, that's why I asked. Yes, sir. Yeah, any more comments, questions?
Just go with the, to my counselors, what do we do now?
First of all, Clean Water, let's get that.
I want the Clean Water Services.
Clean Water Services, and I would like to follow up on the pocket park situation.
Oh, out of park requirement.
Yeah.
It was his, you know. What do we call it, pocket park or park?
Yeah, so, and Rodney says that if you look at the master plan on page thirty, it talks about small parks within most urban neighborhoods.
Yeah, yeah.
So therefore, you can implement...
That was what, when, when I was working on the master plan, that was what the intent was, to have a pocket park in every development.
Right.
That was the intent.
Sounds like you need to start drafting and giving some ideas to Rodney, uh, to us back about what you want to see.
Yeah, I think percentage of acreage makes enough sense.
You want me to help you? I can help you on that.
Sure, Gretchen, come over to my office. Let us math, so a hundred acre, which is about the size of the town center if you take away the open space. So we probably won't see another hundred acre development in Kingston Terrace, but it's easy numbers to have fun.
And that's one that happens...
So a hundred, a hundred acre development would require, you know, fifteen acres of open space if we're going by Beaverton standards, and it doesn't include backyards and stuff, so it's a little weird. I don't think we want to do that. Um, but then, fifty, twenty-five percent of fifteen acres would be three point seven five acres. Buy a three point seven five acre park of active open space in a hundred acres, which really isn't that much. But again, if you do smaller math, I mean, it might be closer to like relative to, uh, smaller development. They're building nine acres in town center, so it would be less than a third of what they're, a little bit more than a third of what they're already building. So we have to find a correct ratio in there somewhere to, I mean, I think just adopting just the active open space specifically and getting rid of the open space provision, say you have, you know, Kensington Square was seven acres, and they needed to put in five percent of active open space, and they have to put in point, uh, point three seven.
Could I ask you to do one thing, would you adopt Beaverton?
Yeah.
And if you read this, it's really unclear to me. It says individual exterior spaces, such as patios, are, uh, count towards the open space requirement.
Right.
And then active spaces, uh, active open space, um, also, yeah. Do, uh... benches, water features, children's play structures in people's backyards, count towards open access space?
Yeah, I don't, it seems to me...
I tried finding a definition of what is that, like, open space?
So like, active, active play, uh, active, it would be like, you know, on public land.
Right, and that would have to be important to be put in.
Of common, public...
We have to add a definition.
Off of private property.
It could be on private property as long as it's open to the public.
Yeah.
Fifty and eighty is probably...
Yeah.
Find active open space, then go in, figure out a decent ratio that, and then also determine if that active open space would go against their net density, which would be a question for Metro.
Yeah, and that's always been my concern.
And I would be concerned, um, because is it going to be public or semi-public? Um, as any mall is semi-public, you can't go in, you can't protest, you can't, um, you are subject to the owner's rules. And so, um...
Well, that would be something that would be determined in the development agreement, whether or not they dedicate it to the city.
Also, um, first thing I learned in landscape architecture practice is maintenance, maintenance, maintenance. Um, hate public parks because they're hard to maintain, um, so that's another thing to...
They only have one public works part of, you know, currently.
I know.
And so...
You did a great job.
Every public, uh, you know, pocket parks, it might be better to have one larger.
Well, and we'll have to see how the city staff might have it opens up over the next few years, because with the construction over at Town Center, you know, it's going to be switched quite a lot. We're not going to have a, a city facility over in that area for who knows how long, because it's very expensive.
Yeah, that is good. What fun.
Yeah, and now, you know, we don't have the guy who was driving the vision, has half the plans. That's, that's...
So you have... You folks are going to be busy in the next year.
Well, I hope so.
Plus, we're going to be having regular applications for development, so...
Yeah.
We have to remember, we're going to have our day job to do as well.
We have a line of annexation that we will be hearing in two weeks from today. It's one house, so it's not very complicated, a hundred percent consent.
Then there's a development plan the next...
That'll, no, that'll be in September.
So, um, I was thinking, one of the places, things I was looking at were cottage clusters, as I had thought of them. And that would take, would take a smaller, um, parcel. So are any of the, any of the purchases or plans, um, smaller parcels, or are they all just big swaths?
Well, I mean, you can subdivide...
Cottage clusters in the town center.
They're not technically to, to, a lot of cottage clusters, they're just cottage style.
Yeah. Um, when I was in Tigered, I pushed on it to make them P U Ds, public, special, special rules that apply.
Land units.
Land unit development. And, um, that finally got adopted in the code, and it was specifically to, um, push cottage, traditional cottage.
Right, yeah, right.
Developments, and took two years to get that through.
It's really long. I would think else is really short, and cottage clusters like this.
Well, I know, I know, but it still took over two years to get that through.
Did you see the email that I sent you? So we do have a code section that's fine cottage cluster, it gives you design standards for it.
Right.
It does, it was not changed when they adopted Kingston Terrace Master, uh, the Kingston Terrace District Code, even though the Kingston Terrace District Code allows cottage clusters. So what needs to happen also for a code amendment wise is to update the cottage cluster section to either have its own defined design or at least refer to the district code for like setbacks and...
So the old code?
In the old code, but, but the district code says that that section applies to the master plan, but that section doesn't refer at all, it does refer to...
All right.
So it's small quirks in the code, like I mentioned at our last meeting, little kinks that we need to tweak.
That sounds like an easy kink to fix.
Right, so, but that's not something I want to have three public hearings for.
Yeah.
It's something that will be part of a package.
No, I, no, no.
With the parks, the pocket parks, and with, with the stormwater, if we do try to synthesize that and with, um...
The, the stormwater...
The stormwater housing.
Stormwater goes straight to council, it doesn't have to deal with planning commission. That should be fairly distinct and...
Right, but we can still refer to it in the code, require that. Down on that.
I'd, I'd rather get that done sooner rather than later.
Well, the, the city council can adopt it before it gets put in.
If, if we had, I don't know, a city counselor here to say, to say, how do we get this on your agenda? That would be cool.
Sorry, please tell me that.
No, it's...
So quit, actually, actually, I'm serious.
Yeah.
You would, you, you, as a board, would have to make that decision.
Very careful.
Will you actually, I'm, I'm assuming we only make recommendations?
But we can ask. That's what we're doing, we're asking.
And if, if a counselor tries to vote on it, I would highly recommend possibly doing it.
This is...
This is disclosure.
Yeah.
But again, it should be done, well, it has to be done one after C W S comes.
Yeah.
It should be done after C W S comes and convinces the council themselves why...
Yeah.
Well, if it's coming out this...
Should be in July, should be released in July.
As soon as it's released, I mean, they were going to have, it's been pushed back and back and back. I think we should put our request into C W S to get a speaker pronto.
Wouldn't be an issue.
Because I thought it was really useful when we had, had that discussion.
I agree.
Might be less of a formal discussion, or more, less of a casual discussion, more of a more taken...
Yeah, but you know what I mean? Does anybody have a question about that, or do you agree? Yeah.
Another, another discussion that I had with Clean Water Services for some time, um, which is not my area of expertise, but the city should adopt its own design standards for stormwater facilities. Clean Water Services adamant that they do not, they do not control the aesthetic of clean, of stormwater facilities upon the developer, uh, or the city, and we apparently don't have any regulations to, so... I mean, most developers, if they're good, would want to have any...
Something and be somewhat aggressive and, yeah.
But it would be easier for the city to enforce that if we adopted some sort of section.
And...
I mean, it could be something like, you know, I don't know if I have like a, a planting list that we can refer to of some sort, but...
Do, do I assume correctly, other cities have done that step?
Yeah.
That we can cut the pace.
No, it can't.
Wire, that you have, and the colleges write a report and recommend planting that are suitable for native habitat. And then that would be part of their application package.
Yeah, I mean...
I think I could do that, bro. That's a city.
Do you have any way?
No, it's, it just doesn't need to be a hole in the ground.
Yeah, but it has to be clean, clear, objective standard.
Right, yeah.
It can't be appropriate, it can't be...
A nice whale with a fur.
Yes, yes, yes.
Make it look pretty.
That doesn't fly.
So that would be something I'd have to figure out exactly how it works, but...
Concerns changes to the community development code taking two years versus we recently had changed to our community development code regarding the steps going up to the...
That's true.
And we got that through.
Well, that's going to be building code, not a land use issue.
Well, I thought it was, it wasn't the community development, it was...
No, no, there are pieces of that code that are building code related.
And design standards.
And so DLCD and Metro don't get to talk about those.
They don't care about the design standards.
But I wonder what, what are the changes?
No, it was, but it's, there's only X sections that go to D C L D and the various incendiary towers that be.
It depends on the topic, depends on what it covers. Anything that's building code related, they don't have any, uh, any authority over.
Not like building code, like Carol was talking about, that's a design standard.
Design standard.
Exterior, the houses, that sort of thing, that the city has pretty much authority over how to dictate. So I did have to go through the thirty-five day notification to DLCD, and you guys had to have a hearing. The city council is currently continuing a hearing and will be either adopting that or not adopting that next week. Um, or actually, no, not next week, they have to read the ordinance and then in August, then they, so even those two words, and that application was submitted to the city in March. So two word application was submitted to the city in March to potentially be adopted in August.
One of the things, one of the things that bugs me about a lot of cities is they require two readings of every ordinance. And that wasn't true in Tigered, and it made things so much easier, because you had to, you know, have an extra meeting about everything, yeah.
That's a charter.
I know, that's, that's one of the things I want on the list to fix. I cherish. It's on my list, absolutely.
I don't know if you got your mail, Commissioner Mitchell, of the notice of the two words, and that would be in the, what, the Oregonian or something?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah.
And that's, as I said, that's, that is a tweak, you know, it's, it's a relatively simple tweak, but it has to be in the city charter to not to have two readings.
And that means it has to be voted on by the people, after all the rest of the problems.
Yes.
So my question is, are we going to like be done with development and then try to fix it after two years?
Oh, development's been going, going to be going on for a lot of years, but it's going to, it's going to be, we're going to have some developments that happen before we get these things done.
So I think we know what we're doing on the, uh, clean water stuff. Uh, we're keeping our focus small at this point. Um, what, what have, what do we do now? What do we need to put together for the pocket park issue? I'm assuming those are kind of the two we're going to get our feet wet with. Am I thinking right on this?
Again, Commissioner?
Because it has language to refer to from Beaverton, and it's going to kind of...
We can...
Put some things together, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Because you have time.
When I was going to...
Is there anything we can do to help?
Well, what I was planning on doing, uh, before this meeting, uh, was kind of just like turning the gears in my head, was that I was thinking about going and talking to the parks planner over at Metro, as well as the, uh, general planner that worked on the master plan, and has thus far been checking our density requirements.
Oh, that's, you're, yeah, you're, that's legal.
And so to, um, the parks planner specifically to ask what he might suggest would be a good ratio of just like what we're talking about. So I'll see when I can set up a meeting with him, and then depending on the outcome of that meeting, maybe if it's positive and it seems like a simple fix, I could potentially, you know, put it, send out some headlines and have you guys review it. But then again, as I mentioned, I want to have... But then again, as I mentioned, I want to have it be at least a little bit comprehensive. So I would also, before I go to propose any changes to the code and notify DLCD, I would also want to do the housing diversity one as well and then maybe the stormwaters.
So I would like to suggest our meeting two weeks from now should be comparatively quick, I'm assuming. Um, just after that to get an update of the two things, two things we're talking about. We can see how, how we're doing, what's going on, what, what we can do.
And I also only have one week to finish my staff report and all that stuff.
I'm not asking, I'm not asking for a complete book report.
No, but I have to, I have to do my whole report for the annexation. Should be easy.
That's right.
But it's still, you have to-
I just send out all the notices and do all the-
And you have to go through all the little-
Yeah, I'm, I'm only asking. Tell us what happened.
It's, it's on my, I'm in an email I focus over at Metro tomorrow morning.
Yeah.
And if I can be of any help.
Did I send you the Tigard stuff? Did I, did I send that to you? I couldn't hear, I can't figure out what I sent. No, I didn't say that. Tigard looks, looks completely different. And it's actually a bit more clear.
Yeah, I-
Oh, that's right, you did it, yeah. Of course you did. Well, you signed it to them.
No, I don't have it in my hot little hand. Oh, I have it-
Does anyone have any more questions about the relevant topic?
And do you have any other comments, sir?
No, it sounds like you all are motivated to move along and get things done. I think you know some process now. Do you have any further questions about it? Get them to me, I'd be happy to answer them.
Well, that was a mistake.
Um, I have a thought, Ronnie. Would it be appropriate for somebody from the planning commission to make a report to council sort of on what, what we're going through and what we're thinking needs to be done and? I think maybe that's-
Maybe in August, agenda.
Yeah.
Here, I have some answers for you, everyone.
Yeah.
Let them know that the ordinances they will be seeing hopefully-
Yep, and-
Months, but they-
Coming attractions.
Coming attractions. That way, they really appreciate knowing that.
Yeah, because I'd be glad to-
And then on a, on a separate note, I do have an announcement before we adjourn, is that the city was awarded four hundred and seven thousand dollars for the erosion control.
Yay!
Well, well done, Matt.
I can't say-
We're in the valley and we're going to build a trail.
Thank you so much, Gary, for the work that you did. It's very appreciated.
Thank you, thank you. Wow, that's-
There was a lot of rain. They provided the input, all of you just putting together.
I know, but-
But it happened.
But it happened and it really got, with help to get this grant.
In addition, uh, as I told Max, I've been down to the area where he's put up the fencing and the things. And it's ideal. It, it creates a visual barrier to make people aware. I mean, we're not going to physically prevent the world from doing something, but it's a, the awareness is there. So, uh, my gratitude, my thanks for taking that on and just making it happen.
But the signs were stolen.
My sign was stolen.
Yeah.
But I bought new ones. And they're already stolen.
Why would people steal signs like that?
I don't know, the clip, it was kind of cool and-
Oh.
Only the clip sign, the two clip, the next one.
Somebody named Clip.
Right. The danger is there. But I got poles that are coming next week and a pile driver. Someone to go back down to the park and pile drive actual poles and, you know, like, not just bolt the sign. Really, if someone down the-
Maybe if you put a caught stealing sign will, will be theft.
I should blow my law. And, I mean, I still want to build more fencing on the other side.
Yeah, that's just like, it's right down.
Yeah, I, I'm not, the one, the stuff that I put up on the near side was like, is perfect length. I didn't measure it beforehand, but it was the only stuff that we had.
I went over and looked where the fencing was and wasn't. And I got a little too close to the edge and I thought I was in the-
Dear.
I'm going to go down there and then kind of cut that.
Didn't want the excitement of sliding downhill?
Well, I wouldn't have to crawl out, you know. Soon enough you're not.
And I went down there on Monday to see if I had the signs still and they were gone. And so I kind of wandered around the park for a while to see if maybe someone just kind of chucked them into the woods. Didn't find them out there. I did trip over a log and there was stuff that I didn't see. That was like twelve inches high and my knee just went boom right into it.
Oh, 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 look at that.
Yeah, so I want that to be on the record.
You, in, in, you know, in support of the city, you got-
Right.
Yeah.
So, anyway, that was my announcement. And I'm going to be working with the city engineer and hopefully, uh, Clean Water Services to, because the suggestions that Clean Water Services had for the permanent fix, some of them were way outside the budget of the city. And it was a stretch to get the two hundred thousand and the city's going to have to commit to it at a match. Two hundred thousand is a lot of a match for a single capital park project.